Good morning and welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Today is September 25, 2007. We're going to be discussing the capital improvement programs. Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Here.
Quintero?
Weaver?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mr. Starbird?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're going to pick up where we left off last week, which was at the beginning of a discussion of priorities. You've had several study sessions where you have focused on a number of unfunded projects, that is, projects not provided for in funding in the current capital improvement program. And so the review has taken up matters like various alternatives and options for each of those projects, of which there are numerous projects, and the costs associated with those, both operating as well as capital. The next phase of this discussion is really to begin to get feedback from the city council on your prioritization and how you'd like to begin to narrow this focus on the many projects down to the number that we can get more information on that we can begin to focus on for funding in the CIP.
I'd like to clarify something. There's no money for any of these yet unless we go into the reserves. So what you're trying to do is prioritize, get our feedback and prioritization, and those that make it to the very top, we will be able to consider in the budget next April or bringing out reserve funds in order to fund some of them. Is that about right? Because people are getting the impression that we're going to prioritize these and we're going to spend the money.
Actually, Mr. Weaver, maybe at some point we can go back and revisit the resources side of the capital improvement program. To say that there is no money, I don't think is accurate.
Well, money is there, but I'm against using reserves all the time.
No, no, no. Let me finish. Not just reserves. You recall in the capital improvement program, there were projects that were estimated for funding with sources from both the CIP as well as other sources that could be brought into the CIP. That was the preliminary budget we brought to you. For example, there was in the neighborhood of $30 to $40 million in GRA bond funds that were shown as a resource in the resources line of the CIP. When questions arose regarding a number of the unfunded projects, and in an effort to adopt those projects that at the time the council could agree on, we pulled a number of projects out of the CIP. And along with that, and in doing that, for example, we pulled out Fire Station 29 and Fire Station 26 and Casa Rodrigo Library. As a result, you ended up with a positive balance in the CIP, but a list of projects that if you did the maximum project and you did every one, it far exceeds the amount of resources available, unless you then looked at ways to supplement the CIP funds.
You're right. I forgot that. So there are some monies.
Oh, right. That's right.
That we can, that we didn't budget, chose not to at the time.
Right. And the thinking was, because we anticipate this to be a bit of an iterative process, where you're going to need to make more than one pass as we begin to narrow down the priorities and achieve a consensus in the council. We did go back, a study session, two study sessions ago or so, I believe, Ron, and reviewed, again, the status of the resources in the capital improvement fund as it was adopted on a preliminary basis. We thought now we'd begin, without really focusing necessarily on the dollar limitations, begin to focus on the council's priorities and begin to narrow down the numbers of projects and sort of the breadth of each project that you'd like to get further information on.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a special request for early priority by Dr. Richard Dispiritu. I will accommodate that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. I am Dr. Richard Dispiritu. I want to address something that was in yesterday's articles. This was a partial quote. What are our preferences? The statement is, what is your obligation? The Americans with Disability Act was passed in 1992. The first site survey was done in 1994. Presently, we're saying there is $25 billion of unfunded money, programs that are unfunded. If we go back 15 years, it would have cost us $1.6 million. If we go back 13 years, that would have been $1.9 million. I don't know what the cost is to make over the last 13 or 15 years, but it would have been a hell of a lot cheaper. The city of Montebello, which is one-third the size of the city of Glendale, its chambers and city hall completely complies with the American with Disability Act. Why can't the city of Glendale? According to the mobility study, there is approximately 90,000 people who visit the city to shop, eat, visit, go to theaters, and work daily. Using the percentage of 1 and 1/4 percent, that makes it nearly 410,000 people annually who come to the city of Glendale with disabilities. We know there's 50,000 people here in the city of Glendale with disabilities, and after talking with a number of people, I have come to the understanding that they usually have seven visitors. That's 350,000, so we get a lot of people with disabilities coming into the city. I had been asked who to blame regarding why the city has not complied with Americans with Disability. Several weeks ago, I watched the city council and staff weasel out of the brand library complying with ADA by avoiding the financial threshold, not installing all bathrooms, only two. If there is a true need to get this $25 million, I would strongly suggest that we do a 10% cut across the board in our staff and eliminate 50% of our 600 Spartans. 300 Spartans held off over a million Persians. I don't know if we really need 600, $100,000 a year salary employees to run a city of 200,000. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay. If we can pick up then, Mr. Starbird.
Well, that brings us back, Mr. Mayor, to the, I'll call it the project listing, unfunded project listing that you received, I think, a couple of study sessions ago, beginning to list without all of the detail that you had on previous handouts. It is just a simple listing of the unfunded projects. For example, if, let me just make sure we're all referring to the same sheet. I'm looking at this sheet. If you don't have it, I think--
Is it a single page?
The single page, I'll call it the summary sheet of the detailed projects. Then behind that, you had the sheet that Mr. Yusefian has in front of him with the detailed breakout of various options. I think, Mr. Mayor, we should begin to have a discussion of the projects on that list in any order that you'd like to take them up and begin to get some sense of whether there's interest in the council pursuing them further, and if so, sort of the nature of what you'd like us to be pursuing. And I anticipate that next study session and following study sessions, we'll bring you back even more detail on those, and you can begin to narrow this number of projects down. At some point, we need to put them back into the CIP structure that Ron has up here on the screen, which not only deals with the amount of money and the nature of the project you'd like to pursue, but also the year that you'd like to fund that, because the CIP is a 10-year plan, and funding availability sort of depends on the year. I also anticipate at some point, we're going to need to talk about supplementing resources of the CIP, if there's an interest in doing that, because I expect the interest and needs are going to outstrip the amount of resources that at least we projected in the CIP, and so we'll need to talk about how we might be able to get additional resources into the CIP to support projects you'd like to pursue.
As we go through this, Mr. Starbird, I wasn't looking forward to this day because I think it's some very difficult issues, not just in terms of our priorities, but in terms of the fiscal issues involved. Do you recommend that we set aside the available funds for the moment, whether it's $26 million or whether it's going to be anything greater than that, and go through and express our priorities for these different items, or are we talking more absolutes, just cutting the projects that do not seem to have enthusiastic support?
Well, we've kicked the process around quite a bit, and there's one argument for always being mindful of dollars that are available and making decisions that fit within the existing resources as we know them. On the other hand, I think that can tend to drive out a discussion the council needs to have about the merits of the various projects. So our thinking was, let's set the issue of funding aside for the moment and try to first, in this initial pass, get a sense of where the broad interests lie. If the broad interests lie, for example, in a neighborhood pool facility, and that's a higher priority than a community aquatic center, and it certainly costs less and is more achievable, then let's get a sense of that. If there is interest in soccer fields, and maybe we have a goal of, we'd like to try and accomplish in the next 10 years, two soccer fields, three soccer fields, four soccer fields, we have an estimate here of what a soccer field costs to build. If there's a desire and a goal that in 10 years, that's what we'd like to try to accomplish, then we can begin to put some of those pieces together and then come back with the numbers that will show the implications of that, and then in another pass through this, begin to sort through, okay, we'd like to do four. Here are the financial implications of that with everything else we'd like to do. Are there other options we can turn to that'll help us achieve that, or do we have to pull back on our objectives then being faced with the fiscal realities of it? But again, we're open to suggestions. It was just our thought that you probably have a better discussion if, for the moment, you're not necessarily completely hindered by the fiscal constraints.
Okay. So who would like to begin?
Well--
Or would you like to go project by project and just go down the list and--
Why don't you hit on the hot button ones that we continue to talk about and the committee talks about?
Okay.
We're talking libraries, fire stations--
We've got--
Land acquisitions.
Okay. Now, are the libraries, let me just ask a question of the city attorney--
Did we go again?
Libraries would require me to recuse myself.
You made a decision on Casa Rodrigo Library and Fire Station 26.
That's off the table.
And so, yeah, well, and we noted on this list that that discussion is off the table to be revisited in '08, '09.
Okay.
So we presumed you wouldn't revisit those two projects.
Correct. I mean, there are a lot of hot buttons. So why don't we just start at the top, for lack of a better way? Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? I think we have a goal that we kind of set priorities and goals. Maybe we need to discuss about what is the goal of the city? What is the goal of the council? What is the highest priorities that we're trying to set? What are we trying to do? Are we trying to set goals that is going to deal with issues within the next five years? Are we going to set a goal that is going to set the future of this city in a right way? What is the goal? Is this a five-year plan? Is this a 10-year plan? Is this something what our forefathers did when they spent large sums of money building a power plant and providing for our Shaw Canyon, providing a water reservoir system? What is, there are two different goals, the short-range and long-range goals. Which one this is? I mean, what are we setting up?
I think some of these can be short-range goals. Some of them are also long-range goals. When you talk about infrastructure, I think, and streets and power plants and all that, that's clearly a longer range. Some of the others, I would envision, are well within sight of completion, depending on which one you look at.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
My first priorities, and I think the vast majority of the committee would agree, safety and traffic, dealing with the traffic, which is not going to get any better. And if we neglect the safety and put it lower down, or we neglect trying to get ahead of the curve on street and traffic transportation, we're not doing a service to anybody. So, I mean, there's a lot of crying needs, but to me, those two jump out as ones that have higher priority to me.
Okay. And which ones from our lists would directly address public safety and traffic?
Well, street rehabilitation is a broad topic. I don't know what else in it. It's only $71,500,000, a rough estimate. So we obviously talk about, we put more dollars into it annually, but still, there's street improvements that can be done in terms of turning lanes, widening a foot or two here and there. There's a lot of places throughout the city where we could upgrade to some degree. It's not meaning buying a lot of real estate and increasing traffic lanes, but where we can, I think we broke that 71 million down, it would be more than just resurfacing streets, replacing them. Our streets are in much better shape than most cities as a whole, but it's what you do within that framework. And I know San Fernando's on here. I drive it every day, and below the 134, it certainly could use a resurfacing, but I don't know if that's tied into landscaping or anything else in that sector which would weigh into it. In Central, I don't know if we need to have Central done as a component of the Americana. That in order to make the traffic flow better, do we have to make-- that in order to make the traffic flow better, do we have to make the improvements on Central, which jumps out ahead automatically? I just don't know where it's going. It's not to put the fire station stuff down, but we got that domino theory when we started looking at the first three. Are we going to keep the fire station there? Are we going to move the fire station? Are we going to keep the library there? Are we going to move the library? And if we're going to move the library, is it going to go to Rock Haven? And they're all tied together, those first three. But fire stations are, to me, are a safety issue, if the fire department believes they are, and we want to remain a Class 1 fire department. Streets, the others, I mean, there's nothing on here you can say is not important. We just have to make hard decisions on what we do with the stuff.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay. For myself, if I'm going to set priorities, it would be parks, recreation, facilities, sports facilities, et cetera, followed by traffic mitigation issues. And so along those lines, I have a question. The Central Avenue rehabilitation from Wilson to Glen Oaks, the full reconstruction, I know we got a presentation, but my question is, do we have any data that will show exactly how much of a mitigation it will be for traffic? I mean, will it flow, will traffic flow 30% better once it's completed, 50% once?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, we don't have that kind of data. As you recall, this was part of the mobility plan, where we would try to use Central as more of a vehicular street, whereas it would take some of the burden off of Brand for folks who were just using Brand to get from point A to point B, and not necessarily using the downtown area. So we don't have percentages of how much more flow it can take, and what impact positive that would have on some of the other streets. But it does include widening, it does include left and right turn dedications to try to improve traffic, bus flow, and that kind of thing. So the traffic moves better on Central as an incentive for people to come over there in addition to taking more capacity. So the hope is, is again, you know, if you're coming off the freeway, and you're trying to get to South Glendale, for instance, and you don't have any desire to go to the Gallery of the Americana or anything in between, you're going to take Central, because you're not going to have to deal with parking, and people looking for parking, and slower traffic, and there's much pedestrian. We would want more pedestrian traffic on the Brand. So that's the idea, the concept, but no raw data, as you suggested.
Okay. So in effect, we're going to eliminate parking on Central? No?
No. No. We'll do some widening, though, to accommodate. And then, you know, using right turn lanes, where you can keep people in who are making right turns and not back traffic up, doing things like we did on Brand with the bus stops, putting them on far side versus near side, so you can get those right turn flows a little better, not back traffic up, those are the kind of improvements we're looking at. And then we're doing, like I said, you know, a little bit of widening, there will be still the parking, but I think mostly the left and right turn movements, and keeping those out of the flow of traffic, keeping traffic flowing is a better way to put that, I think, is where the real improvement's going to be.
And how long did you anticipate it would take?
For the Central project?
Yeah.
A good year.
One year.
Once we broke ground.
Down to a final paving?
Right.
Smooth paving.
Smooth paving.
Are you doing some work on Central now, underground utility work?
Right now, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, there is a portion of Central that's getting done as part of the Americana project. That just goes up as far as Wilson.
California, Wilson.
So it won't go past there, and then we pick it up from there and go north to complete that.
So I've heard some general support for the Public Works projects generally, some support for parks and recreation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yosefian.
I haven't made my comments as far as what I support and I don't. I just wanted to know what the goals were.
I'm referring to the comment summarizing up to this point, Mr. Weaver and Mr. Quintero.
I tend to agree more with Mr. Weaver than Mr. Quintero. I'll tell you what my logic is. It's not that I hate parks, I don't hate recreation. To me, there are certain things you do in your own life, like we do with everybody else. There is the primary needs. What is a city's primary needs? You need to have electricity. It's a must. That plays in your safety. If there's no electricity, your fire department's not operating, your police department's not operating, people at home can't turn anything on, that's number one issue to me. We have a power plant that is extremely old. It is basically operating in shoestrings. If you don't believe me, just bring back the new power plant manager, who happened to be the old power plant manager, which we beg and plead for him to come back to run the power plant. It has fallen apart. We need to replace that with at least 225 megawatt power generators, base loaders. That's one thing. To me, so power is an issue. Let's not forget we had an issue with the brownouts. Two, Shoal Canyon, the date that it's going to be filled up and reach its maximum capacity, it's getting in here very rapidly. 10, 15 years, we will be at full capacity. We need to make a decision what we're going to do with that, and whether we're going to put some kind of a waste-to-energy plant there, are we going to raise the height, or whatever, what the cost of that is? We haven't looked at that at all. People are not going to be very happy when they have parks, but the whole neighborhood stinks because there's no place for garbage to go. So that's the second thing, that I think, as we've talked about it for seven years I've been here, we're yet to do something substantial. We do a little bandage here, a little bandage there, you know, a little 50 megawatt power plant there, but that's not going to solve your issues. Those are the two that I think we need to deal with. Three, I completely agree with Mr. Weaver. Traffic has been the number one issue in this city, continues to be the number one issue in the whole region. I don't drive very often outside of the city. The last two weeks, I had an opportunity to go all the way down to West LA and back several times. And I'm telling you, there were a couple of instances, also on Wilshire Boulevard, on Sunset, that the fire department couldn't move. There were three trucks, four lanes behind me, and they could not go anywhere. They sat there for 20 minutes, because every single line was packed with cars. So your fire safety is not going to go anywhere if your traffic is not moving. So you need to deal with the traffic. So those are the three major items for me before I move into building new parks, new facilities, new all this stuff. But infrastructure is extremely important to me. Power plant, which is not even in here at all, is extremely important. Shoal Canyon and our water. We keep hearing about the water. We have an aging infrastructure, as Mr. Waters told us, which I found out lately. We have a valve that does not operate underneath Campbell Reservoir. Half a million dollars? We just find out about it. How's that getting paid? Where is that coming from? So to me, let's deal with bread and butter first, and then I will go out there and order the dessert. The main staples of your existence for a city needs to be dealt with first, and then I'll move in that direction. We have existing parks right now, that their grass is torn up to pieces, the fences are rusted to a point that I could almost stick two of my fingers through those bases of the posts, light fixtures that are not functioning, or they're basically functioning. So let's fix what we have now, and then think about expanding, or we're just going to build more and let it rot. That's what they do in some other countries, which I have personally witnessed. They put a lot of infrastructure in, no maintenance at all. It's literally rotting away. And I don't want us to be in that position.
Mr. Drayman.
Those are my goals.
You know, let me just say quickly, as usual, Mr. Yosefian, to prove your point, you have to overdo it, you know? Now, what you just, all of the things that you said, that's your opinion and your opinion alone.
Yes, it is.
I just want to make that.
Thank you very much.
I want to make that clear, because you seem to make it like it is a fact, and I'm not convinced that it is a fact. Okay. Well, that's, I think you both have valid points, it's just a difference of opinion as to the needs, and we're going to have a lot of these give and takes, so, you know, don't run out of breath too early now. Mr. Drayman.
Oh, I guarantee you, I won't run out of breath. I've been accused of a lot of things, but that isn't one of them, let me tell you. But I did want a clarification, because I'm looking on here for replacement of the power plant, and I'm not seeing it, so can somebody direct me?
Mr. Starbird.
Just where on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have had discussions about your enterprise funds, and their capital needs, and their capital projects. GWP, both electrical and water, are separate funds. This CIP, we think of as sort of the general fund capital improvement program. That's the capital improvements that aren't addressed in special revenue funds, or aren't addressed in your enterprise funds. And probably one of the most basic infrastructure components that relies on the CIP is streets. Electrical system is in the electrical fund, water system in the water fund, transportation is a special revenue fund, Shoal Canyon is its own enterprise fund, and as Mr. Yosefian says, those systems all have tremendous needs, but frankly, you have an opportunity to discuss those, and have discussed those, in the context of the capital improvement for those enterprise funds. And the balancing equation in those funds usually comes down to rates, and what you can support for a competitive rate in electrical, water, and landfill. And you have had discussions about those enterprise funds, their capital needs, and you will have more discussions about those as we come back to you with proposals for rate adjustments and for capital improvements. That's not part of what the CIP is. This is a general fund CIP, those projects that are not supported by those other funds. So it's all those projects that really rely on the general fund and the CIP general fund resources to support them. Streets being one of the most basic infrastructure needs that's reflected here, but that's not to say that we don't fund streets. We have the neighborhood of $5 million a year in the CIP. Ron?
Yes, we have $1.5 million in the general CIP, and then we have all our gas tax, which is one over $4.
Four, $4 million in gas tax goes into streets. And frankly, I appreciate the sentiment that we need to give attention to, I'll call it, the basics and the existing capital, but we also recognize it's a balancing of needs and interests. To say that we should put all our money into streets, I think even Public Works would say that doesn't meet the community's needs. It would give us great streets, but if we don't have good parks, if we don't have good libraries, if we don't have the facilities that provide the services, then that has as much impact on the community as streets that are deteriorating. So it is a balancing of interests.
Anyway, the reason I asked the question is because, well, I think you've answered it, Mr. City Attorney, City Manager, I just have not heard it expressed, and admittedly, I'm new here, but I haven't heard it expressed to me by anyone from GWP, that our power plant is going to pot. And I know that when we start talking about rate increases, one of the first things we're going to hear is, you know, we need to improve our power plant, we need to, you know, upgrade it, you know, keep it working and state-of-the-art as best we can, and so on, and keep the lights on. So it seems like that argument can be used and used and used and used. I want to land on something here, though, in addition to that, and that is about our, we keep talking about our forbears, and our forefathers, and our city fathers, and so on. And they were, in many ways, and I say this as a native of this city, they were very smart folks in many, many ways, very forward-looking in many ways, and many people sitting up here, and many people actually sitting there, can tell you, can recount to you any number of stories as to why that is so. But they were not smart about certain things, and that is very clear. See, if we spend all of our money on making just great roads here, the discretionary funds of our residents will continue to be used to take those roads and drive right out of Glendale to spend their money. Because our forbears didn't think, they thought of, for example, arts and culture issues as luxuries. That's it, period. That is why in 2007, this city, third largest in the county, still does not have a single modern library, I mean, a single modern museum, single modern museum of any kind. I mean, you can even go to the Museum of Dentistry in Baltimore, and you'll see a more state-of-the-art museum there than you will in this city. We couldn't bring a professional exhibit from a major museum in this country to Glendale. There's not a single facility where we could place it, not one. Not the Gallery at Brand Library, not the Gallery at Glendale Forest Lawn, nowhere. These things are not luxuries. They're not dessert. They're part of the fabric of a city. They create part of the tone and feel of a city, the flavor of a city, the personality of a city. We just don't, we've never put a premium on those things in this city. We do individually, and we talk about it in general terms, but we really don't, when it comes down to it, make it a priority. So there will be some things on this list that I will be looking at to try to change that. You can also be short-sighted, and I say that as someone who grew up in a family that didn't have a lot of means, so I know that even if you have a limited amount of money, but you know you have children to put clothing on, and you see that this store on the corner has a sale on those particular articles of clothing, you may spend the money there today, because you can get a better value there, because an opportunity has presented itself there, where your money will go farther now, at that particular time, even though you know that you need to replace the roof down the line, or that you need to replace the refrigerator down the line. I'm not really interested in sitting up here and talking about absolutes, because there aren't any absolutes. Don't ask me to, I can prioritize which of these things I might like to see us spend our money on, but don't ask me to prioritize the needs of the city here and now on a piece of paper. They're varied, and they're all interrelated. So simply to say, it's roads, it's streets, it's traffic, and it's the power plant. Yes, those are all very important, but to say the power's going to go out in the city? It's nice to have parks, but we're going to lose our power? I don't think so. That's not how I'm going to be making my determinations. So I might as well just segue, Mr. Mayor, right into the fact that I want to talk about areas like Rock Haven, Mountain Oaks, not because they are in the north part of the city, but because they are unique opportunities. And I want to talk about Rock Haven as one of them. This is a unique opportunity for us, not just to purchase a piece of property, but to purchase a piece of property, we will have the opportunity to then have that property to accomplish several goals on this list. Rock Haven could, excuse me, Mountain Oaks could be another one of those. I'd also would put a premium on the recreational pool at Pacific Park. That, to me, is a significant area. I mean, I could speak more generally and just say parks, recreational spaces, but I think what you're asking is for us to be a little more specific than that.
I think we need to dig in.
Yeah, and the, I think soccer fields. Although, I want to add, a lot of you are talking about soccer fields, I think when you ask the folks from AYSO, what they're going to tell you is, the majority of those kids, that 3,500 or so kids, are living up in the north part of the city, most of them. So does that mean you put them there, even though we need more park and recreational space south of the 134? I don't know the answer to that. But let me stop there, because I've been rambling for a long time here, and hopefully it'll cause some of my colleagues to agree and disagree, and then we'll kick the cogs of discussion free here and get rolling.
And let me just say, as we start to dig into this pudding here, I would like my colleagues all to speak freely, and hope that nobody takes any offense if they're if there's any, uh, um, difference of opinion on any of the projects that they think, uh, are, deserve a higher prioritization. Uh, I, you know, feel free to disagree, I think I don't need to tell you guys that. But, uh, let's not take it personally, and we're all working for the, the better good, and let's just let this brainstorm continue and let the opinions fly. Uh, Mr. Quintero, then Mr. Weaver.
Okay, um, I am also interested specifically in Rock Haven and, uh, Mountain Oaks, because they are opportunities, and you rarely get opportunities in an urban setting. And while north Glendale is obviously less urban than, uh, than the central and southern districts of, uh, Glendale, there's certainly plenty of multifamily homes there, plenty of single-family homes, and so those two, uh, properties, I'm very, very interested in pursuing, and I think we, we need to do just, uh, that. Then, uh, the soccer fields are very important, and the sooner we can get them built, the better. So we have to look at, uh, Columbus, we're not even looking at this point, I think it's more just a question of design. So Columbus, hopefully, will come online soon, and that's certainly in the central district multifamily, uh, neighborhoods of, uh, Glendale. And then hopefully, we can try to cite at least one or two other, uh, soccer fields. And remember, soccer fields, while you do play soccer on them, in fact, they're open fields, that people can do different things. You can jog, you can do lots of stuff, take your, your younger kids out and play catch, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's very, uh, very important. So those are my priorities. And then I'm, I'm absolutely interested in doing what we can to help traffic flow throughout the, uh, city. The Central Avenue Rehab, while I'm interested in it, I'm a little, uh, surprised that we don't know exactly what we're going to get here. We're talking about almost twelve million dollars, maybe even more. And so, I mean, I was hoping for some sort of traffic studies, or, uh, generally speaking, if you're going to have more right-turn lanes, more center, uh, turn lanes, that will speed, uh, traffic without a doubt. But, uh, at any rate, for me, the two opportunities that we have to purchase, some significant properties, I think, uh, that have sort of, you know, become available, I think that's particularly, uh, important. And then the, uh, athletic fields are right there with the, uh, with those other, uh, properties.
Mr. Weaver, then Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you. Um, well, I'll only consider Mountain Oaks if it's a benefit assessment district. I made that statement after Flint Canyon. Now we're spending the taxpayers' money on open space, it eats up our reserves, we lose the interest that we earn on those reserves, which hurts us overall in the general fund. If people want things done in their specific areas, I support the benefit assessment district concept. Soccer fields, the greatest need for soccer fields are in northern Glendale. AYSO totally agrees with that. More soccer players are in the La Croix Center area than anywhere else in town. And northern Glendale has more parks than any place in town. So I don't know how you justify it, the greater, if you're going to add a soccer field or open space. In terms of park space, it'd be in the southern part of Glendale, yet most of the parks in the northern part. Being convinced that soccer fields are going to have to be the, um, at the schools with the dual use, uh, since the land's already owned. The only thing I would say on this, I would, if I was, had done this list, I would have liked to have had it a week or so earlier, each one of us, and let each one of us privately put a point order on this, from one to five or something. Hand it over to staff and see if there's any consensus, just to begin with. Now, we've all talked traffic, okay? We're all talking traffic, that'd be a higher priority than something else. We're talking fire stations that would show up, because we each have our own thoughts, or we're going to sit here and debate back and forth. I think that would have helped, uh, because I could go down through these and I could prioritize one to five, roughly, and then talk about it and see where adjustments could be made. So we're all going to go at each other's throat here today.
In a good way, though.
In a good way.
Good way.
But I don't know if it's, uh, closer, uh, to where we want to go.
And then, uh... Mr. Yusefian.
I'll, I'll let you know where my priorities stand, and it's my opinion, yes, that's true, this is how I feel about this. Uh, number one, issue of Central, I think Mr. Zern was inaccurate in his statement. Uh, I think maybe he forgot that the downtown specific plan had a whole EIR done. In the EIR, it pretty much specifies specifically what is happening to Central. Uh, I was one of the people who pushed for that, and my colleagues, at least three of them, including Mr., uh, uh, Mr. Quintero, who voted for that, as a matter of fact, he insisted that that be part of the downtown specific plan. Uh, there are pages and pages of document in that document that basically show graphs that show what happens to Central, how much it widens, where the right turns lefts are, and so on and so forth. So, and that was analyzed in the downtown specific plan as part of the mitigation for the downtown specific plan. So that's there, and it, it, it says what the volume changes are and so on and so forth. Uh, I apologize for having better memory than some of my colleagues. I don't remember what I ate three days ago, but for some crazy reasons, I remember things in EIRs and budgets from twenty years ago. Uh, my wife sometimes wonders what the hell is wrong with my brain, and she's right. Uh, I'll tell you where I stand on, on, on Columbus. I, I think soccer fields, projects that we have started with, we had, uh, a concept we discussed with the school district, I think we should move forward. Soccer field on Columbus, we talked about it, we came to consensus, we're moving forward. It happens to be on the southern part of Glendale. Uh, the issue that AYSO players are in northern Califor- uh, northern section of the town, and we should not build inside, that makes no sense to me at all. There are people who drive all the way to San Bernardino to play soccer. And, and from north part of Glendale to a little bit south part of Glendale, we're talking a ten-minute trip. So to me, I don't have to build them up there. Let's build them down here, kill two birds with one stone. Uh, we can have a soccer field in the southern part of Glendale, some more open space in southern part of Glendale, and I don't think AYSO will be complaining that, gee, they have to drive five minutes to get to it. So Columbus, I'm a yes. Community Aquatic Center, we have talked about it, we have moved about it, we have put money into it, I'm a yes. Uh, as far as the, uh, the other thing that I think we should do is, uh, Doran Street Park. We bought the land for it, we spent money for it, we have a design for it, we're doing an affordable project, and we should continue to finish that and build that, that's a yes. Uh, tax default properties, I would say, anytime we have an opportunity, uh, I don't know if I will put a million dollars toward it, but I would say that we should look at that, because that is the cheapest way for us to buy open space. When somebody doesn't pay their taxes, then we pick it up for almost next to nothing, and, um, I'm yet to, I don't think we have ever spent a million dollars on tax-deferred properties, even combined, all of them.
This number was this number?
Oh, over ten years, a hundred thousand, then...
Yeah, we do probably spend, I'm sorry, we do probably spend a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so this is for ten years?
Yeah, remember, these, these numbers...
These are ten-years' numbers.
Yes.
Then I'm okay with that. A hundred thousand is not that much. So I'm okay with that. Uh, Central, uh, I am okay with that, rehabilitation of that. Uh, I think on, on the libraries, I tend to be in a direction of rehabbing the Montrose Library onsite. The cost of that is five-point-five million dollars compared to thirteen or fourteen million dollars if we built it somewhere else. Uh, so that's almost an eight-million-dollar difference in, in value, so, uh, I get a better back bank for my money for that. That's a mid-century design, and, and it can be added on to. I am for a new fire station up in Montrose that needs to be located in a different location, uh, and, uh, I think that's a fourteen-point-five, that's infrastructure, I am for for that. Uh, underground parking on the fourth site, uh, I think, uh, as Montrose becomes, especially the shopping park, becomes more and more successful, uh, there is going to be a need for more and more parking, and as the southern two blocks are, I mean, eastern two blocks are becoming, uh, full, as people have more desire to move to the twenty-three-hundred block, uh, things will change, and, and there will be more people in that block, and there will be some need for parking for there. So we should look at what will happen ten years from now, so let's build it now before we, we have a need for. So those are some of the things that I'm going to go for at this point. Uh, I agree with, uh, uh, Mr. Weaver. Uh, I will go for, uh, uh, Mountain Oaks if they want to do something. I personally think nobody can do anything with Mountain Oaks. I, based on the city attorney's briefings or anything else, and the history of Mountain Oaks, I think we will be wasting our money for something that it will just sit there the way it is for the last forty years, it will continue to sit there the way it is for the next forty years. Uh, as far as the Rock Haven is concerned, uh, I still do not have the numbers, what it would cost to, uh, cut some kind of a deal with the current property owner or the potential property owner, uh, what options we have, we did not discuss this in closed session, so I'm going to keep in mind, open mind on that. Uh, but that's, that's where some of my, uh, priorities would lay, is to finish up some of the stuff that we already started, to get some other infrastructure stuff started.
Mr. Starber, do you still wish to, uh, speak?
I'm trying to remember what my point was, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me go to Mr. Drayman.
And it'll come back to me again.
Write it down.
I will.
He doesn't have the memory you have, apparently. Comment on a couple of... One of the reasons you heard me object slightly when we were talking about, uh, the issue of Rock Haven and libraries and fire stations, were the numbers that we were putting on paper then and saying with, uh, large caveats, "Well, we really don't know, but we need to put a number down, so let's put a number down and, and, you know, because we have to have a number." But now here we are, and we're using those numbers, and we're arguing based on those numbers, which I think are starting to prove to look like, uh-uh. Um, and please correct me, and I'm sure you will, if I, if I misheard you, Councilmember Yusefian, but you mentioned a number of about fourteen-five for a new library.
Yes, that's the number that the staff provided to us.
Right.
What it would cost to build a new library.
Right. And you used the same number for building a new fire station.
Yes.
So, we're going to...
Same number again.
Right. No, I'm not, I'm not criticizing your, uh...
In the stuff of...
Yeah, no, I'm not criticizing your, your source here. Just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So, keep the library where it is, expand it, because we don't want to spend fourteen-and-a-half million on that. But it's okay to move the fire station and build a new one, rather than expand it where it is and spend the fourteen-and-a-half million on that. The same number, same concept, one is building a new fire station, expanding a library, the other is building a new library, expanding the fire station. So I have to assume that what, what is actually being, uh, proposed here is that we just, we put the priority on, on building the new fire station. I don't understand that, and I'm hoping that through the course of this, we'll, we'll talk about it. The other thing, um, that Councilmember Yusefian brought up was the idea of closed session related to, uh, Rock Haven, and that was brought up here some weeks ago.
Yep. Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. Um, that's, uh, a point. And then I have a question about aquatic, the aquatic, um...
May I, may I interrupt in here?
No, I'm...
Mr. Drayman, finish. I have a request from Mr. Quintero, then we'll go back to you, Mr. Sorry, John. Then we'll go back to you, Mr. Yusefian, then I'm going to hear from the public.
Um, Aquatic Center. A lot of, uh, feedback I'm getting, uh, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Mayor, because it was, it's, it's one of your issues that you've brought to us about Aquatic Center, uh, that I keep hearing from the public is, are we talking with that about a purely, in other words, does that not have, or the vision of that is to not have a community recreation aspect to it, like, say, a, a pool at Pacific would be primarily a recreational pool? The Aquatic Center, does it have a recreational component or no? Because if it doesn't, then we're talking about perhaps a different audience or a different clientele, so to speak. And, uh, therefore, the location of that might not be as critical as, you know, a, a public pool. And I'm not clear on that myself, and so, and the reason, let me just explain why I'm asking the question about what is the vision for that, because, um, and I see Mr. Myers in the audience here, and he knows where I'm coming from on this, and he probably is going to know where I'm going pretty quickly, because he knows my view on this. With regard to, uh, Mountain Oaks, I, I am not clear right now as to whether or not that can be built, uh, by a developer or not, but the only way that, that I would vote to spend money on that at this time is if that space could be used for some immediately accessible recreational purpose. And so, my question then comes back to Aquatic Center. If it could be a future home for an Aquatic Center, who are we talking about going there? Would it be a recreational pool, or would it be a, for competition, people in training, uh, school, uh, teams, and, and so on? I'm not clear on that myself, and I need a little help with that. Um, and I'm sure part of that is because the, the original discussion predates me. Likewise, uh, issue of, uh, perhaps, uh, equestrian use there, or hiking use there, or tennis courts there, or fill in the blank, perhaps even soccer there. So my, my point is, the, the only way that I'm going to vote to spend money there is if we are going to look at that property, um, in a way that it can be used for immediately accessible recreational space, that is also going to preserve the, um, the general, uh, integrity of the, the historic elements there as well. So, um, now, let me just stop talking and see if I can get somebody to respond.
You want some clarification on the issues you raised about me?
Let me clarify the issue. Uh, you're going to have a chance after. I'm just going to address his one question and not go on further.
Okay. Well, that's what I was going to do, but go ahead. I'd like to know that, too.
The issue of the Aquatics Complex, I think the consultants made it clear that it's got to, it must have a recreational component in order to, to survive. It can't be a solely dedicated competition pool where we're only going to let the, uh, the athletes and the competitors in, that it's got to, to survive and to generate any sort of income. It's got to have the little, uh, play, play area and serve recreational purposes as well. So that's, that's indoor, uh...
Is it diving?
I think it would have diving as well, diving boards. Uh, back to Mr. Quintero, then Mr. Yusefian, then I'm going to the public.
Okay, uh, I checked off Pacific Park originally and forgot to, uh, mention it. The Pacific Park Neighborhood Pool, we've already allocated some monies, we've actually looked at design, so I think the sooner we build that, the, uh, the better. Then in terms of Mountain Oaks, what concerns me is not what we're going to do, or whether it can be built in the next two years, what concerns me is future city councils and what they may do four years from now, six years from now, eight years from now, unless that property is placed in the public, uh, trust. And I say that because who knows who the ultimate owner might be? Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, if we use, uh, uh, some state and, and even federal monies, but if that's not placed in the public trust, and we have no idea what will be built in, uh, on Mountain Oaks, not so much up in the hillside and the mountainside, but actually in the meadow. And then finally, in terms of, uh, fire, library, Rock Haven, et cetera, I've said it before, my concept would be to buy Rock Haven. The existing fire and, uh, library, that building would be turned over to the, uh, Fire Department. I just, I drove by it last week and really checked it out. I believe a rehab of that facility would be more than adequate for a fire station. There's a lot of square footage there, there's adequate, uh, parking. Think all you have to do is go in there and rehab that, and you've got yourself a very nice, uh, uh, building, uh, in the current location. Across the street, that large, uh, parking lot, that could be turned into a commercial enterprise at the City of Glendale, whether it brings in a, uh, a small supermarket, whatever it does, the City of Glendale can realize a very good income from that commercial property where the Ford dealership was in the past. That in turn can help to not only pay for the rehab for a fire station, but could also help to provide, uh, a Rock Haven site where we could build a library, use some of the existing buildings. buildings, and I think everybody would win. We're going to have a very good-sized property in the Rock Haven site. It could be a library, a cultural center, museums, et cetera. We had a chance to walk through the property, and to me, that is the, that's the way to go. We're talking about three different properties, each one of them can be utilized to the maximum possible, as the real estate industry likes to say, the highest and best use.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my colleague asked a question, and this is more about the question that he asked, is why did I say build the library and not? I'm going by what staff provided us last time, so I'm not making this stuff up. Rehab of the Montrose Library onsite, $5.5 million. That's page 2 of 13 of this list, okay? Rehab of Fire Station 29, $14.50, $14,500,000. Build a new fire station, $14,050. Costs the same, makes no difference. Right here, construct new fire station. Right there. What date is that?
Rehab fire station...
$14.50.
Well, we came back with a corrected version. You're reading off of the earlier version.
What date is that, Mr. Yusefian?
I didn't get it, yes. This is what I'm going off of.
Jim?
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, just a correction before we get too far down the street. That copy, that version had been provided in an earlier study session. We noted that it was unrealistic to think that a rehab would cost the same as a new construction.
So, where's the new version been?
So, we distributed to you a new spreadsheet on that. If I turn to Fire Station, for example, here...
Copy of that?
Yeah. Well, it's right here, Mr. Yusefian. The rehab was anywhere from a million to five and a half million. New construction, 14 million, the same figure you had before. So, we noted that no rehab would not cost the same as new construction. That's just counterintuitive.
Okay. So, this is different.
And again, a range of anywhere from a million, which you'd do very little, to five and a half million, which could be a very significant expansion if you were going to move into the library area. So, I think you're working off of old numbers.
Okay. Could I get a new one on this then?
Sure. We'll do that.
Thank you. Then I'm standing to be corrected. Thank you.
We'll give you a chance to, are you...
No, I'm just going to go over this thing because I'm working off of something that I had. I didn't have this. I just got this.
Give you a chance to look at that.
Thank you.
I need to get to the public. We have someone that needs, has a medical situation.
Before I cancel them?
If this changes, I'll...
Okay.
This is a study session, Mr. Weaver and...
Oh, I know, but I'd like to have my input before the public.
You've got several opportunities.
And I'd like another one, just like Mr. Yusefian has had, Mr. Drayman has, Mr. Quintero has. Come on, Mr. Mayor.
Come on, guys. Let's not fight about the order of speaking. We've got other things to fight about here. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. I'm sorry, I have to request, I'm having a migraine coming on, and I wanted to at least bring up a couple of options, or two.
It must be spreading.
It must be. I think that we really need to look at these needs in context of what has occurred in the past. You know, Mr. Weaver and Mr. Yusefian are right about the priorities, you know, traffic, electricity use, landfill safety. They're absolutely the core essentials of a city. But what has happened is that since 1980, we increased our population by 67,000 people. In other words, the impact that this number of additional people, and I benefited from it because that's what I built here, it's the impact that all these tens of thousands of people have on all of these things, on traffic and electricity, trash, and the safety requirements. So, had previous city councils prior to you taken a look at perhaps the impact of those residents coming in and allocated money towards it, let's say $5,000 per person, would have had, you know, $200, $300 million already at our disposal in capital improvement monies that would have been available. But what has always been put in the back burner, even when you have this planning document, has been parks and recreation. Now, the planning documents that came out of this environmental impact report for area recreational planning area 10, it went from 27,000 people to 30,000 people. It went from .03 acres per thousand to .02. We're going in completely the opposite direction. So, when does a community get relief? 30,000 people with two minuscule parks, one a teardrop-sized park that is smaller than probably your front lawn, and another one that is, you know, 80, 100 people in a, you know, in a third of an acre. It is an incredible disregard for a community that generally perhaps doesn't come around for the elections and, you know, doesn't provide the kind of monies that the fire department gives you or many other organizations give you. But it's definitively a need. There is an impact, there's a cost to every individual that moves into Glendale, whether in a new condominium or as a renter. And really, the cost to the city is between $5,000 to $10,000 per person on all of the infrastructure needs that actually gets accumulated. I'm running out of time, Mr. -- I appreciate the time, but you cannot do this evaluation without a context of the accumulated need that you've had in the past and doing the comparisons with all the rest of the capital improvements and basically what the needs of Glendale are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Myers?
Good morning, Mayor Najarian and city staff. My name is David Myers. Came down to talk about the future of the City of Glendale. That's why we're here today. Improvements, capital improvements, not to insult anybody, but not so much the maintenance aspects of the budget, but where are we going to be? Where's the city going? I really think that this is what this planning meeting and capital improvement projects is all about. And Mountain Oaks, I really believe it is an improvement to the city, would be very beneficial for the citizens and travelers and be a draw to the area. So, we have some suggestions, Friends of Mountain Oaks Group, and that's keep it on the CIP budget. We don't have a dollar figure. No one does. But that's one of the things that we would like the city staff to do, is open discussion as far as with the present owner and see if we can work something out. And as far as funding it, be creative, matching funds, grants. There's a fair amount of different types of funding out there for it, because it is a partnership. And as far as the future of Mountain Oaks, we would like to keep it as a urban wilderness area, as recreational area, non, no lights, I guess is the best way to put it, because it's, it would change the dynamics of everything if it were to be illuminated at night. So, I did bring with me, if I already could pass these to, everybody gets one, and took the time to make those, and I won't go over the specifics of it, you can do it in your time. And thank you very much for keeping us on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Hoffman? Followed by Dave Weaver when he comes back in.
Councilman, or Mayor Najarian, councilmen and staff. Albert Hoffman, resident of Glendale. It was, listening to what's going on here, it really surprised me as well that our power station is falling apart. I hadn't heard that. And it strengthens my opinion that over the years, our council has been reactive, not proactive. They react at the present, when there's a crisis or something, they react. But when they keep approving development after development after development without considering the impacts to the infrastructure, traffic, sewage, waste disposal, they don't consider that. Now, all of a sudden, it's a problem. That shouldn't be a problem. Safety, traffic, the basic needs of the city should not be on a priority list, or what are we going to do for the city? That should be a given. We deserve that. We need a council that looks ahead, not react to what they did 10 years ago. This is where we're at. I remember here, when was it, four years ago, we were arguing about the Americana. We had an EIR. "Oh, there is no impact to traffic." The Traffic and Planning Commission unanimously rejected that EIR. What did the council do? "Oh, no, it's not a problem. In fact, the developer is going to put money in to solve the traffic problem." Now, all of a sudden, "Oh, we're going to have Americana problem." You know what's going to happen if the Americana is as successful as the developer claims and all the people that came down here and said, "Oh, we need this thing for Glendale." If it's not successful, people are going to go there, but they're not going to go to any other place on Brand Boulevard. This isn't a project that's going to stimulate Brand Boulevard, pedestrian traffic. You think they're going to go to the Americana and then walk all the way up Brand and down to other places? No. It's going to be a flash in the pan when it first opens, and then it'll just slowly eat away at our resources. We had plenty of money to give to the developer. He hasn't got a gift like that from any other city, but we had the money to do that. So, I think we need to think about what we can do for the future. I believe the Rock Haven purchase would be a great thing to do because it is a unique opportunity. I spoke with the Fire Station 29 people at length at our block party last week, and they really believe that improving the fire station where it is would be great in moving the library. And they felt that was really an important thing. They believe that's the right location for the fire station, and I believe it is. And I think the property, if it was a Trader Joe's or something that we're trying to figure out to move the fire station to or something, could be, all the income from that, revenue from that should be earmarked for the fire station and the Rock Haven. It could be a real boon to the whole area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. That concludes the cards I have. Mr. Drayman?
I'd like to touch on a couple of things, one related to Mr. Meyer, one related to Mr. Hoffman. Part of what I read into what Mr. Myers is saying is something I think is a very important factor here, not just related to Mountain Oaks, but also issues like Mountain Oaks, such as the Verdugo Hills Golf Course and issues like that. It doesn't cost the city a penny to take a leadership role with regard to some of these For example, you know, we haven't, I don't think we've done the research to really know what our financial involvement might end up being with Mountain Oaks. I ask, you know, "What was it sold for?" I get basically a lot of blank stares. You don't even know, was it sold? Was it a paper transaction? Was it a speculative transaction? We haven't investigated, sitting down with representatives from the Santa Monica Conservancy or other agencies or entities to say, "Well, perhaps our involvement might be a very small monetary involvement." We don't know that, and we won't know that because we haven't taken the leadership role to find out. Verdugo Hills Golf Course is another example, where you have people, entities, that are saying, "Well, we're committed to financial involvement on this," whether it's, again, the Conservancy or City of Los Angeles, the county, whatever, that have all said, "Yes, there is potentially money available there." State of California as well. But we're not in active conversations with regard to those two entities. So, a leadership role would be helpful. Another example would be Rock Haven. Well, we know that at one time, the asking price was a particular figure, but we don't know where that is now, and reasonably with the market the way it is, that is likely not the case now. We're starting to get some numbers there. But the point I'm getting at is, again, we're being asked to prioritize things when we don't have the information still, and we haven't really taken a leadership role, even separate and apart from the CPI discussions, to bring parties together to help us financially with some of these. And that brings me to the second point, and maybe this was what the city manager forgot that he was going to say and forgot. I'm going to pretend it is anyway. The idea of prioritizing some of these things and not worrying so tremendously about how we will pay for them yet. And as I understood it, that was what we were supposed to be trying to do here, figure out what are the, and it may go along well with what Mr. Yusefian was saying earlier. What is our goal here? I think it might not hurt us to step back from the numbers for a minute, because that's how this process was explained to me, to step back from the numbers for a moment, try to prioritize these items, and come up with a list of things we'd like to see, and then we can talk about how we will be able to or not be able to fund them. That's what I understood this process was going to be about. And I'm just going to pretend that's what the city manager was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver? Before I interrupted you.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify. I'm willing to listen to a partial, a partial portion of Rock Haven being acquired, but I have nothing. I need to know approximate costs, whatever, feasibility, can we do it? I have nothing to look at yet, but I'm willing to look. Mountain Oaks, I happen to believe that a recreational pool belongs at Pacific Edison. An aquatic center is totally different than a recreational swimming pool. Closest we had to an aquatic center was Verdugo Plunge, the Keyhole. Now, I had suggested Verdugo Park because it is open. If you look at another location, maybe it works for Mountain Oaks. But until I know the cost of acquisition, potential, the traffic loading to bring people into a recreational, aquatic recreational center, the environmental impacts from all phases, I can't say I back that either. Until we decide if we're going to put an aquatic center or something like that there, I stick with the benefit assessment district. The people in South Glendale have never come in and supported Mountain Oaks being purchased. Not a one. I haven't heard it from Glen Oaks Canyon, I haven't heard from Chevy Chase, Northwest Glendale, anything. It's human nature. It's not in my backyard, so you don't care. The people that care are in Lockers Center. If they care enough, in Assessment District. If we get involved in an aquatic center, that's a whole different thing, but we're way away from doing that. New park development, we talked last week about the co-use, creating a buffer zone behind the car dealers. I think that's pretty important. If you want to give the people in South Glendale park space and buffer zone for noise, whatever, on Brand, then that ought to be a little more important. But I just want to clarify where I stand on Rock Haven and Mountain Oaks.
Okay. I have a few comments to make, because I've sort of remained silent. Hurry up. Okay. Thank you. My comments obviously are my opinion, and I do reserve the right to change my mind or reprioritize as additional information and numbers come in. That's a legal disclaimer.
Say, does that disclaimer cut into your three minutes we're allowing you?
My, and let me just, let me just get into it, folks. My number one priority on my list and my top tier is the creation of an aquatics complex centrally located, which would have a, as I clarified with John, a recreational use that would serve the entire community, all age groups, all socioeconomic levels, accessible to everyone. I'm also very strongly in favor of soccer fields. I think we should go forward with the Columbus Field Creation, the Joint Use Project. I'm strongly in favor of developing Site A for as much recreational use as possible. I understand that there may be some lower, and not to discuss numbers, but there may be some economical and cost-efficient ways to create some soccer fields on Lot A, which would really make our dollar, on Site A, which would make our dollars go far. would really make our dollar, on Site A, which would make our dollars go far. The Rock Haven, I did take a tour of Rock Haven, and with all due respect to the historical preservationists, I don't see the structures on Rock Haven worth preserving. I think they're in a pretty deep state of disrepair, and to attempt in any way to reconstruct or remodel would cost a lot of money in general terms. I'm not opposed to getting involved in a slice of Rock Haven to preserve its general open space, although I have to note that there are a lot of open spaces in that area. There is the Chrysanthemum Valley Park not too far away, Montrose Park just on the other east of that. So I can't see that that area is lacking in park space, but I'm keeping that door open. In terms of Mountain Oaks, I did read the city attorney's opinion brief on that, and I really am of the opinion that any significant development is just going to be impossible there due to the legal issues surrounding the illegal subdivision, and an objection by any one of the property owners there is literally going to kill any project. Which leads me to my next question, which I still want to hold the floor for. Mr. Howard, let's say the city would decide to purchase the open space there from whoever, for whatever price, and decide to put in soccer fields. Let's say those soccer fields have lights. Would the objection of any one of those homeowners kill that project?
Our opinion is, on the issue of re-subdivision, that we treated it as one parcel. So regardless of who owns it, it's still one parcel. And ultimately, as I think we pointed out, that it would take, our position has been that way since, for the last at least 30, 40 years and not longer. It would take a court to essentially indicate that someone, we would have to accept an application and that someone would be able to re-subdivide without the signatures of all of the owners that are currently up there.
Okay. Those are some of the, that's some of the issues I have with the Mountain Oaks. I'm not sure it would be a good use of money to preserve land that may, just by its own legal situation, be preserved as it is. You saw what happened when someone had the idea to do some development there. There was a firestorm, and they didn't even play their trump card yet. This was all, you know, before they even got to the table to sit down with those hard issues. The Montrose Library, where it's situated, I've been through it again, my kids go there, I like it, it is a mid-century design. I'm not really keen on relocating the library itself. Some upgrades certainly are in order. We need to pay attention, of course, we've run, we've run out of all sorts of money now, but going on further down, I think we do need to pay attention to some of the traffic impacts and the issues that we raised in our EIR in terms of infrastructure upgrades. I think that there is going to be a new era of transportation and mobility in downtown Glendale that is going to introduce a lot of pedestrian use, a lot of transit use. So I don't think we need to devote the entire 12, what was it, the 71 million dollars that are indicated here. Some use, yes, but I think our traffic situation is certainly a lot better than anything you would experience west of our city limits. There's one other item that somehow slipped by during all our study sessions. That's the potential of a trolley up and down Brand Boulevard. Obviously, it's late in the game, we don't have any numbers, but that's, I think that goes along with some of our traffic flow issues and some of the issues Mr. Hoffman raised about, although we're not talking about the Americana since he opened the door, to help pull people out of the Americana and up and down our Brand corridor, both for additional shopping and for getting into the neighborhoods, connecting with our B-line, so folks won't have to drive in to park at the Americana. There's nothing on this list that I can, with a certainty, erase or eliminate. They are all valid, valid projects. There's a lot of subjectivity involved here. As community needs change, as the dollars come in, I, you know, I think we should all reserve our right to reassess our opinion. We're not writing anything in stone. It's my hope that we can, I hope that Mr. Starbird's been taking copious notes here, getting a general.
On page four, so.
Page four. Hoping that you can come back to us as we've hopefully focused, to some degree, some of our desires and priorities. We're going to have to have certainly additional sessions and discussions when we crunch the hard numbers. But that's enough for me right now. Let me go to Mr. Drayman, then Mr. Yusefian.
So I can see the headline in tomorrow's paper, "Council Gives City Manager Writer's Cramp." Okay. Well, another item that was, we haven't mentioned, and I'll mention now, just to throw out there for discussion, why not? We've overspent our money by about 16 ways here, but also I'd like to throw into the, or bring back to the table, the discussion about creation of a dog park. I think Mr. Weaver had sort of targeted an area that the city looked at, and the city looked at, came back to this group and brought up some possibilities there that would not be necessarily tremendously expensive. I mean, there's a range of costs, depending on how involved or developed it would be. Just want to bring that back out onto the table. You mentioned trolleys, Mr. Mayor, and despite the image I have in my head of Councilmember Yusefian hanging out the conductor's window or the engineer's window with a engineer's hat, that thing traveling up and down Brand, I would also be somebody that would support that at some level. I don't know whether or not it can come out of this particular go-around, but it's something I would consider. The issue I would hedge on that is, you know, talking with our business people downtown and what would be involved in the teardown of Brand Boulevard and the inaccessibility to businesses while that is happening, but I would certainly like to discuss that. So count me in on that one, at least at some point. Mr. Weaver brought up, again, the concept, as he did the other day, about a buffer area, and privately, we were trying to think of a different name to call it, but I absolutely endorse that, and I would like to see the city think outside the box on that one. And I think that is one of our best answers for park space in South Glendale, is to create a park, a sizable park, along the South Brand corridor that would facilitate expansion of inventory storage for our car dealerships underground, where we could have park space, sizable park space, and at the same time, boost our income to the city through the increased sales tax revenue from an area that is already, depending on the year, either our largest or second-largest sales tax revenue generating area, and grow the businesses down there at the same time, creating park space. I like that idea very much, and I think we should explore that more, and soon, and very soon. I'd like to also address a couple of Rock Haven issues, comments. I have toured that site probably more than anyone up here, partly because I grew up in that area, so I know that site quite well. Like you, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I also don't believe that you can rehab all of those buildings, and that is really not the idea there. The idea is to, at least my concept is, to preserve one or two of those buildings, probably the two that have sprinkler systems in them, for future use in tandem with a library, not to use them as a library space, but to reuse them for classrooms, for computer labs, for senior classes, for historic center, for community meeting area, which will cut down on the size of the, of a new library, because part of that large number of, amount of square footage we were going to add to was to create a new library on-site that also included a community room or community meeting room. That need would go away because you would have the rehab two buildings on the site. In speaking with the historic community up there, that sat well with them because the idea was not to preserve every building on the site, but something that was representative. That site represents the last link to why the Chrysanthemum Valley was settled in the first place. It is the last remaining link to the 20 more than, about approximately two dozen sanitariums that dotted the Chrysanthemum Valley when that area was considered to have the healthiest air in the country at the time. And so, working in tandem with the people from Sunrise Homes, we could have a facility that has a new library, added community space, little bit of open space there, and preserve another aspect of Rock Haven's history, which is as a care facility, so a senior care facility.
And just to let you know, John, at one point, there was a proposal by one of the car dealerships to create some park space.
Still is.
Behind.
Still is.
With underground parking.
We talked about that, actually, here, but I'm talking about on a large scale.
I understand. Mr. Yusefian, then Mr. Weaver.
To have the fire chief come up, our new fire chief. I have a question.
Chief Biggs?
Endrum. Endrum. Well, as a fire chief, you're a fire chief.
Interim, but with very deep and long roots here in Glendale.
Right. Chief Biggs, there are two items in here, as I look at this thing. One is a rehab of Fire Station 29 on-site for $5.5 million. The other one is a new fire station construction for $14 million. Would the rehab work for you? When they say rehab, I don't know what to the extent is. Is that going to give you what you need for the next 30, 40 years?
Oh, for the next 30, 40 years? We're relying on a project report. It's a good step. It's a whole package of things with the library, though, and it, there's a, we're working on some plans right now, let's go to that, to specifically define what we can do for certain amounts of money, kind of a shopping list type of thing, from, like it says, from 1 million to 5 and 1/2. The 14.5 was put in there as a rehab cost also initially because it was believed that to do, to actually build an effective fire station on that lot is too small, the station, the engine room is too small, the dorm, everything is too small for modern apparatus and for moving around, and for the elements of a community center that we usually build into a fire station wherever we can. 5 and 1/2, we're working on a plan for that. We're working on a plan for 1 million.
What is the 5 and 1/2 to?
5 and 1/2 million.
You're taking out the fire station and building a section there?
Refurbishing the entire building, including the library site, into that library, into that structure, yeah, we can use the site, certainly. The original 14 and 1/2, the reason that, again, that was put in as a rehab cost, because basically, the direction of our report was to, we had to level that building. It is so inadequate in terms of its construction and its condition and its ability to serve as a fire station that that was the plan originally, and we've come back under the direction of city manager and said, 5 and 1/2 is a more realistic rehabilitation cost. That would include expansion of the engine room, remodeling of the library area. I don't know what the purpose of that would be, because the engine room's right in the middle, and we'd have to redesign how we operate there at the station. 5 and 1/2 million, yeah, I think it would be a very large step, and we could certainly use that to make the place last. If it was built in the same style as it was 50 years ago, then no, it's not going to last 40 years, because the building is just, wasn't designed, built together properly in the first place, but with today's standards, yeah, that would be fine.
So what I want to know is, for 5 and 1/2 million, would you be able to take that facility, the way it is, library and existing fire station? You may have to tear some buildings down, you may have to build some new buildings, you have to modify some of them. You would be able to meet Title 24?
Yeah.
And you would be able to provide a facility that you could use for the next 30, 40 years?
Yeah. As far as the project says, yeah, I think we can.
Okay. That's the important thing to me, because I don't want to spend 5 and 1/2 million and five years later have you come in here and tell me, gee, this building was a makeshift, it didn't quite make it, and this was just temporary because we needed to Band-Aid it. I just need to know this. This is, it's not going to be brand new, like you were spent 14 and 1/2.
Well, for 5 and 1/2 million, that's a lot of money, and you should be able to build a pretty good facility for that.
Okay.
We are going to come back to you on Station 26, obviously. That one was, is a short-term repair.
Right, we're just talking on the 29.
29, yeah.
So that's what I want.
If that's your direction, we'll put together a package and design and get it to the city manager within that budget system.
Mr. Starbird, do you have something to say about this item?
Yeah. I guess a concern I have is, without looking at it further, I'm afraid, I'm concerned the chief may be overly generous about a 5 and 1/2 million fix, solving a problem for 30 or 40 years. I think it, because the standpoint of whether or not a building is as serviceable and will support the operations as they prefer to see, to say, can you make do for 30 or 40 years? I think it becomes pretty questionable when the basic building integrity is one that's already been there for 30 or 40 years and has outlived its usefulness.
That's exactly right, yeah.
My view was, the million to 5 million gets you past this current 10 years. Certainly, they can make do and hold on for at least another 10 years. A permanent fix, where we'd say it's going to meet the next generation's needs, that probably at some point has to be a new building. A tear-down and rebuild, maybe incorporating some existing components, but to think we do that, to think we do a 30 or 40-year fix for 5 million, it may be overly generous.
So 14 and 1/2 million is what, 30, 40 years?
That's at least, that's a 30, 40-year fix.
Okay, so that's a 40-year fix.
5 million probably gets you beyond, probably gets you beyond the current 10-year.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you very much. That's one thing. Mr. Mayor, the other issue with, Mr. Hoffman raised about, gee, I'm hearing about this now, what is going on. The power plant would have to be replaced regardless of whether there was Americana or whether there was no one at all. It's a 70-years-old plant. Things don't last forever. Metal fatigue and so on and so forth have an effect. And we have to remember one thing, our older generation power plants cannot operate. We used to be 300 megawatt, we're down to 200. Reason is not because of us, it's because of AQMD, because requirements that they have, that was the reason, not because of the Americana. I do agree with two of my colleagues on the trolley. I think, by the way, the reason we spent a million dollars on the mobility study that was originally, was put together for a trolley purpose, which then later on, we had it modified so we could do the study, so the trolley will be part of that. That's why we spent a million dollars on. I went to Washington, got that million dollars for that purpose, but we were able to modify that, but that's okay. There's still an interest and a desire on behalf of DC to help us with a trolley on Brand. And no, one of my colleagues said they're worried about tearing out the streets. You do not have to tear out all the streets. The new trolley systems you could put in will be rubber-built, but it will just have a blade that goes into the ground. All you have to saw cut is only about a foot by foot to put your electricity down there. That's all, which you replace with concrete, and it works fine. So on the issue of the fireplace, again, after the explanation, I tend to go with a new fire station. I'm not going to spend 5.5 million, and it's going to last me 10 years, and then I've got to go back, and I won't be here in 10 years. I can guarantee you that. You could write it down, and I'll sign it.
We have written it down.
Yeah, I know you have written it down. Nevertheless, but I think the future council members and the future people will have to deal with this. In 10 years, it will not- In 10 years, it will not cost 14 and a half million dollars. To tear down a fireplace, fire station and rebuild it in 10 years from now, you're looking at 18 to 20 million dollars. So, as, as you move further down the line, costs are going to go up, so it's going to be higher. So, to me, I think if you need to do this for next 40 years, that would be the option that I will take. And the city, from the city attorney, question from city attorney. On the issue of Mountain Oaks, I have raised this issue several times. Besides the fact that there are some obstacles today, and we know they exist, they've existed for 40 years. Does this council has the authority to rezone that site? I know it's a single parcel, but single parcel that has 400 owners, which we consider that illegal subdivision, nevertheless.
A parcel with about 12 to 14 owners.
Well, no, there is, there is a lot of lots. Oh, yeah, well, you could say that.
Like 12 occupied owners.
Right, 12 occupied owners. Would we be able to rezone that?
The answer to that is yes, we could rezone that.
Okay. Can we rezone it to SR and would the existing occupants be able to live there?
Yes.
Or do we, do they have to vacate the place?
No, they would be able to continue to reside, they'd be legal non-conforming.
They'll be legal non-conforming. So, and that would solve some of our issue, wouldn't it? Because if it's an SR, and, and I'm, I'm thinking out loud, and when I step out, let me know. If it's an SR which is a recreational zone.
Special recreation zone.
Does the special recreation zone, let's say, I own, let's say, 20 acres of that, that is not taking all of its property value out, right? As a property owner, I still will be able to, let's say, build a private aquatic center there and rent it out, correct?
Possibly. And, and that gets into an intensive factual review to determine whether or not we're destroying all economically viable use of the property. Right now, the impediments to development are based on, one, the illegality of the subdivision back in 1930, two, the obstacles that one would have to overcome, even if they were able to overcome that, because of the minimum street widths, the whole, the minimum parcel width, the health, what I'll call the, the health, safety and welfare impediments to development, even if the illegal subdivision was, wasn't even an issue. So, I couldn't answer that here without doing analysis to determine if we rezoned at SR, does it arguably destroy all economically viable use under Penn Central and the other cases?
Because of flat areas, you, it will, because we have rezoned certain areas in this town.
Yes, we are.
SR zone. And, and there are SR zones that are in private hand today.
I would have to check the zoning map because normally our SR zones are publicly-owned property, either us or a school district.
Chevy Chase Canyon is an SR zone. I mean Chevy Chase Country Club.
Fort Hill Athletic Club.
Fort Hill Athletic Club, it's an SR zone.
I don't think that much sure if that's in LA, is that in Glendale?
No, that's in Glendale. Yeah. Those are all SR zones and they just sit there. So, and it's privately owned, it's a facility, golf course, pays money. So, I think that would be an option that I would go for. It doesn't cost us anything. It achieves the goal that my colleagues are looking for and what the, the people who live there and the locker centers looking for. And then that money could be used, the money that we save, could be used for something that we really need.
Let us take a look at that. I think the, the two examples that you gave were existing facilities that were rezoned after they were in existence, which means they can continue in existence and they could be rebuilt as private, as opposed to raw land where you're essentially downzoning it to a special recreation use and limits, in their mind, probably restrictively.
And this is the type of conversation that I wished to have about, six months ago, I've been asking for this for six months, that we need to put this on the agenda, we need to have you do the research, we need to have this discussion, so deal with this, before we even went in here. And I would appreciate, Mr. Mayor, hoping that you could use your, your power in, the power of putting things on the agenda to make sure that this comes on the agenda within the next three weeks or four weeks.
Right after the condo conversions.
Well, this would save us, this would save us big bucks and it will eliminate a lot of hassle.
All kidding aside, we do need to get an answer.
We'll, we'll look at that additional issue, but I should point out that the issue that we looked at, which was requested by the council, was the developability and the restrictions to development at Mountain Oaks. This is another twist on it, which I like, and I think it's something that's certainly worth exploring and we'll take a look at.
And very relevant toward our discussions today.
Absolutely.
So, as, as quick as you can work those.
I think, I think that can be worked out fairly quickly.
Deputy City Attorneys, we'd appreciate it.
It'll be worked out fairly quickly.
Mr. Quintero.
My hand up.
Go ahead.
No, it's okay.
He poked me in the side. No, that counts. Okay, Mr.
Yeah, as for the rehab of the fire station, we haven't had any structural engineers take a look, architects have not drawn up plans, so we have no idea how long that building could be used. It could be used for 25 or 30 years. We've made no decisions on what to do there. So, to say that we're limited to a 10-year period if we do a major rehab at the fire station is absolutely not correct. We don't know. We don't know what we're going to do. So, let's not start immediately cutting the, cutting the amount of time that this fire station would, would be able to be used.
So, Mr. Quintero, are you wishing?
Wait, 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 Mr. Drayman is next.
No, no, Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Weaver, Mr. Weaver.
Just so Mr. Drayman knows, I was also born in a sanitarium and it still exists. They just renamed the Glendale Adventist Medical Center. Remember?
Oh, yeah.
It was a sanitarium, still is, in a way.
Although I don't know that I would tell the public you were born in a sanitarium.
I keep telling him not to say that.
John, I've done that many times and it explains me. I'm making a joke about it. That's what a sanitarium does to you.
I remember, sanitariums were about clean lungs, Mr. Weaver. That's the, that's the point.
I came in with clean lungs. The other thing, public seems to misunderstand, when the previous councils did the downtown specific plan, we downzoned all of the downtown area on brand was for the purpose of preventing high-rise commercial buildings. They said if you could park it, you could build it. The town center could have been a commercial building 50 stories tall, tall. And that would have been a tremendously more traffic on brand than what can accommodate now. It's only because we had the foresight to do that, that we're going to prevent that from ever occurring. In terms, and also in terms of in the mid-brand, bringing the heights way down. So, they lose track of that, thinking we're just creating more traffic. No, we reduce traffic. And the trolley idea, I've talked about that for more than 10 years. I'm happy that my colleagues might consider doing it now as part of the mobility plan. I still maintain the cable car system of Frisco with rubber wheels, with the underground cable pulling it on brand from, from north of Glen Oaks, up near Kenneth, clear down to San Fernando Road in eastern west, Glendale High School to San Fernando Road to the west and running them free, if it was feasible. But that's all part of the mobility plan and I still think it's a good way to go. Plus, of course, I like one-way streets, too, and I like four-way walks. Got the buses moved to the other side of the street, I'm happy about that, but there's other innovative things we could try if we get outside the box and look at them, but to make you know, I was born in a sanitarium.
As long as you don't end up there.
Mr. Drayman.
Never know.
This can do it to you.
I didn't want to say that.
Jesse, this isn't it.
While I see Nancy Coffey in the audience, I wanted to also ask a similar question that my colleague asked of the, of Chief Biggs, and ask of you, which is the 14.5 million, what specifically does that include?
Councilmember Drayman, members of the city council, if, if I could just take a minute and bring us back to the.
Reality?
No, no, no. To the list of numbers that we were presented with some weeks back where we looked at Rockhaven, Fire Station 29, the Montrose Library. As we noted at that time, those numbers were just sort of best guess placeholders, very rough kinds of things. And that our desire for a next step with that project, since there are so many options there, you know, we're talking about at least three, if not four, properties, placing the fire station, the library on any one of those, our next steps were to try to get from council some, maybe three or four options that we wanted to. So, our, again, the 14 and a half million dollars, it, it's just a very rough figure. It, it did, it took into account for building a conference, a community space, you know, community meeting room. It, it took into account for having a teen space, expanding the library, square footage, some, that sort of thing. But, again, we don't have specifics, we don't have an architect on board, we haven't worked through the community process, very rough numbers.
Thank you. So, that 14.5 includes something that, if it were cited at Rockhaven, we wouldn't be building a, a community room there because the idea would be to, at some point, reuse perhaps two of the existing buildings that are there, existing structures that are there. The, the other, and that's, that was my only question to you. Thanks. Two comments, I will be, maybe these will be my wrap-up comments for today, anyway. I have been saying to the City Manager since the words capital improvement first hit my ears upon election and arrival here, have been what I would like to see is serious consideration of the combination of purchase of a portion of Rockhaven, citing the library there, the redevelopment of a fire station on the existing site to include the currently existing library site, so that the library, so that the fire station would then encompass that entire peninsula there, as well as the redevelopment of the, what is now the existing municipal lot, number nine, or eight, I think it is actually, there that was the former Ford dealership into a retail anchor for the shopping district there, and also fill the need of, there's simply only one grocery store to serve that entire region there. And I had asked about perhaps a Trader Joe's or a Trader Joe's type, a niche-type grocery there. I still think that is a great idea and I think the more we look at it, the more it becomes doable. But, as you've heard from my colleagues, we haven't really talked about it beyond that. Some of my colleagues have been out to the site. I know, I don't know if Mr. Yusefian has had a chance yet, but I know he will before the day is done on, on this. We're being asked to come up, come to some conclusions when we don't have the information. Similarly, with Rockhaven. Mr. Yusefian's been talking about the, the rezoning of this site since, since I've been talking about this issue, and I've been talking about this issue for almost a year now, about Rockhaven. Long before I came here, I've been advocating on this issue. And that would be a solution, as he says, that would not require us spending any money.
Mountain Oaks.
Mountain Oaks, excuse me, Mountain Oaks. For Mountain Oaks, simply put, in my mind, with regard to Mountain Oaks, the longer this property remains in private hands, the greater the chance that this resource will be lost forever to our community at large as a public asset. So, this could be an opportunity to, to fix that in a very inexpensive way. The ultimate, the most inexpensive way. But we haven't, we haven't looked at that yet. So, that's a second area, we're a second item where we are not looking at it. The idea of, as, again, keep referring to Mr. Weaver's comments about a park that would incorporate some of the South Brand area. We've talked about it, but there's no momentum going toward researching that. We talk about fire stations, but we really don't have the numbers. Talk about a library, but we really don't have the numbers. So, I think, Mr. Mayor, and I would urge that we need to do a little research and do it now if we plan to wrap this up anytime soon, because I'm not prepared to vote, to make a priority.
We're not, and I don't think we should vote.
Let me, let me finish, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm not prepared, prepared to cast a vote. I don't mean that we're going to do it today or, or next Tuesday. I mean, I'm not ultimately prepared to make decisions until I see that research, until I see that information. And I don't know how you can sit up here and say, I'm going to certainly keep the door open and consider it, when we don't have the information to consider it. And it's not, not limited to just those three areas. There, there are a number of, of items on here. So, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, what the mechanism is to, to move the, the gear shift into fast or expedite mode, but I think we need to start doing that. And I would also like to hear from our City Manager as to whether or not, I remember this correctly, about prioritizing this list and not, not sitting here saying, well, let's see, this is this number and this is that number, to give them some direction as to what our priorities are and then come back and see what, of that list, what is doable. If you have a direct response to that, otherwise, Mr. Starbuck, I want to go to Mr. Weaver. And I'd like to bring concluding comments at this point.
I'd like to, again, request, my colleagues agreed to let them list down these 30, 40 items here. Let us prioritize individually, one to five, and have a remarks column that we can write on, so staff can look. Because I've sat here and it's very clear, we've all talked the same issues. We haven't talked about the police building reuse, we haven't talked a lot. But if we sat individually and to look at the list, just maybe staff would get an inkling where we are. Because if I'm staff, I'm sitting here saying, well, you've told me which ones you want me to go back and start developing more detailed information on. Right, Mr. Drayman? We don't have any. But we've certainly indicated where our priorities appear to be. But until, I haven't looked at every one of these in detail and thought about it. If I had a list and I could prioritize one to five, I bet you that there'd be a pretty good consensus of which items are up at the top and which ones are filtered down near the bottom. Now, the only other comment I make, again, on Rockhaven, a portion of it, saving it, there is no area other than the Dobi, Casa Dobi, that has a big area for city events. Up there, walking it, if you preserve a couple buildings, you put the library in the front two-story, because, second story would walk right out onto the existing ground because of the elevation change. You could have a huge park out there underneath oak trees for community events. You could have those couple buildings that you save with the arches that have been upgraded in there. But we got to park it off-site and that goes into the dealings of the sale of the entire parcel, so a long way, but I think it has a potential. But all I can do at this time is say, it's one of those I'd put fairly high up. But I think we, I'd like to have that list and be able to rate to one to five. Even if you don't all agree, I'm going to do it on my own. I'm going to put one to five and I'm going to pass it on to the City Manager and say, here's what I think. That's it.
Send me a copy.
Mr. Yusefian, I'll give you closing comments, Mr. Starbuck as well.
Mr. Mayor.
I got to get out of here.
I, I'd like to go a little bit faster than we've been going and I'll tell you, I'd like to start now, shift to second. There, there is a consensus among all of us about some of the items. So, let me roll down and see if there's a way staff can plug in those numbers, so at least we know what we have. One of the items was Pacific Park Neighborhood Pool. Anybody object? I didn't hear any. I think it was, everybody was pretty much in consensus with that. So, staff can go ahead and plug that one in, so we know when it's going to happen, how it is, how much money we put in and what else we need to do. The other one, Doran Street Park. This is in the middle of the project that we have already approved, bought the land and we're in the process, we're in midstream, the property, actually, today, I think, we're going to, in the housing, going to deal with that. So, that's one thing that it's way, it's way, there's, you're not going to be able to back off of that. So, that's another one. The other one is the Columbus Soccer Field. I did not hear anybody objecting to it, as a matter of fact. Soccer Field. I did not hear anybody objecting to it. As a matter of fact, all of us went and had a meeting with the school board, and we all agreed. Am I correct in any of these? So, these are, I think, projects that I could venture out there and say, all of us in here agree with this. Uh, the, some of the rest of them is issues of getting numbers and this and that, but I think we already know the numbers, we know what this is. Would, Mr. Mayor, would you concur? And maybe that's the direction we should go, and at least have them put this numbers in on these projects that are...
I think, um, Mr. Starbuck, you've taken pretty detailed notes of all the projects, and are, have we given you enough direction to come back with, uh, the projects that we've expressed some concerns?
Well, I think, I think this morning's been very productive. In spite of the fact that you haven't sort of rated things on a list, you've given us a whole lot of feedback. I think there's a lot of, of consensus broadly on areas that we can now begin to pin down further. You're certainly welcome to use Mr. Weaver's approach to checking all the projects on a one to five or a one to 10 and give us your feedback. My thought was, at this point, if you're willing, to allow us to put the first pass semblance of a plan together, uh, that will have some numbers and some years and some underpinnings of sort of the, the public policy thinking on some goals, uh, and bring that, uh, back to you as a, as something to react to. So we can then really begin to hone in on, well, Mr. Manager, you didn't include this, you know, project, and I really think we should address this. Uh, you've made an assumption about, uh, this particular project. I think it really should be more and it should be bigger. Uh, so as a means of reacting to it, uh, and establishing maybe some, some long-range goals relative to some of these projects, whether it's streets or parks in the south end of town, or the utilization of open space. And let us take a first pass at that and bring you back the plan that Mr. Yusefian has suggested that you then can react to. Uh, I think in the meantime, we need to get scheduled a closed session, uh, on Rock Haven, and because I, I know the prospective purchaser is waiting to have some conversation if the city has some interest. I think as of today, it's obvious that there's some interest. And we need to have a closed session discussion and get direction on having a meeting with them. Um, you've got more information you need on Mountain Oaks relative to the zoning issue, but I think the other aspects of Mountain Oaks relative to the potential use of the property, city attorney has addressed in a memo to you, uh, that you got just a couple of weeks ago. Um, so if you'd be willing to let us do that, to take our first pass at a plan, recognizing it's gonna be a point of discussion that you can refine further, I think we can do that in the next, uh, you, you're missing a council member next week, morning? Well, actually, you're missing in the morning. I think Mr. Najarian is here in the morning, but is missing in the evening. So my suggestion is, give us, give us a couple of weeks to pull that plan together. Uh, we can also place on closed session for discussion on the ninth, the question of Rock Haven, which is the earliest, that you should have a full council for that, uh, discussion, uh, and then receive some direction, if that works for you.
Yeah. I think that works. With all the numbers and as much detail as you can generate.
With as much detail as we can, and, uh, again, there's years, there's dollars, and we'll even look at, uh, I mean, you, you have some question marks sitting out there relative to supplemental funding. There was a conversation, uh, a week before last, uh, in the context of the impact fees on commitment of additional tax increment dollars for parks and libraries. That hasn't been factored anywhere into, uh, the CIP program, and you're gonna have a conversation on the ninth about what it is you'd like to do in that regard. But there's a big question mark about supplemental funding, uh, that it really hasn't been factored into any of, uh, these discussions so far. So, we can also, we can also give that some thought and, and somehow reflect what the implications of that could be relative to, uh, projects and their timing.
Okay. Now that being said, we'll do adjourn.
We'll be at your second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you for your time.
We're gonna shift it on Mountain Oaks, send an email to Mike.